Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna bring the July ninth. Board of Selectmen meeting to order. All three selectmen are present, town administrator, fire chiefs here. Leo Martell is recording for the general public and Linda Nickerson will download those so people can watch it. And gentlemen, I have some old business that needs to be taken care of to start with at the regular meeting minutes. Somebody wanna make a motion for those?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty-fifth meetings as amended.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So follow up, I'll make the motion to approve the non-public minutes, non-public minutes of June twenty-fifth.
Keep them all over there like in the past. Motion's been made, and second, and anybody have anything to say about?
Not yet.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we have a special board meeting, non-public meeting. Does anybody wanna say anything about those meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public special meeting minutes of June thirtieth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, that's this one, just wanted to check it. I'm sorry, motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one last non-public.
Yeah, motion to approve the non-
No, the, I did the non-public.
No, you did the special meeting minutes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, this is approved, the non-public special meeting minutes of June thirtieth.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so why don't you sign them, I'll sign the last one at the bottom. While they're doing that, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Anybody from the public? Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Don Larson, thirty-two birth year. And I just wanted to bring up about the cemetery, what we're up to. Starting this month, Jeff is gonna be redoing the road in the center cemetery. And this fall, we've got basic weed control and we're gonna spray all the borders in the fall once everything starts to change, so it won't be a blight during the summer. The mapping of the cemetery that started like six years ago with Grollo and Pike and they bought the software. Judy Stone and Judy Keith have been working on this now for the last two years. We finally signed off on the maps, cause we got everything for all three cemeteries done. And now we're gonna be putting, and all the sites are numbered and we're gonna match them up with who's in there and things like this. So these people that are doing ancestor.com and things along this lines will know. We're gonna be purchasing the largest screen laptop we can to be able to view all this. It'll be a cloud type access.
Now, her guys will be able to view it, but some people won't for that.
Yeah, they'll have to come in to view it.
Okay.
And that's so. Otherwise, we'll have to pay a lot more if they have access online.
And will it be available to them online or not?
No, not right now.
Okay.
So. The Hearst House repairs are moving forward. The historical awareness committee scrubbed the house, turned the gray house into a white house today. And we're having Greg, the town handyman, make repairs on it. So that should be standing tall for quite a while. And the, let's see, green control, that's about it. So, and we're selling quite a few sites, so.
Mike had a question for you.
Is the road agent doing it out of, as far as town business or his private business? He's preparing the road?
Right.
Is he, no, are you contracting or is it just town business?
Well, he's gonna use some town equipment, he said the grader from the town.
Okay.
And once again, I haven't talked to him since we approved it and that he gave us a bid and that, so.
So he gave you a bid for it, he's not-
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was, it's under three thousand dollars, so. And, cause he's using town equipment, some of the town equipment, he's gotta bring him a couple of pieces of his own. And we're gonna have, I think, six tri-axle truckloads of hard pack to put down, stuff like this. So it's gonna be leveled and hard pack put in, so it'll last for quite a while. Cause I can't remember the last time it was done.
And the second question, is town handyman that's doing some work for you?
Yeah.
Is that coming out of your budget or is it coming out of the town budget?
Ours probably. That's, we're anticipating it, because we haven't, we set money aside for the Hearst House.
Okay, understood, I just wanted to make sure that we keep the-
And his bid is way under what we have budgeted, so.
He's doing it by bid with you, okay, that's fine.
Well, yeah, we had to know what we were up against.
He's working as a private contractor.
Yeah, time and material.
Okay, great.
And, so, and the weed abatement is gonna be a thousand, maximum of a thousand dollars, but he's gonna do time and material, so if it's less, you know, we win. Yeah, so.
Well, it sounds good, they're looking good in those cemeteries, you guys hired work is paying off.
Well, I tell you, we've got good landscapers, they're not cheap, but they're good. And they trim around all the graves, because I had, when we had the other one, what? They, the flat stones were getting overgrown, you had, you know, you'd hardly find them. And these guys, why, they trim it every time, you know, so, no, they're really good.
Good to see.
I, I, what Dave said, I think it's a real, it looks like a real well-kept cemetery as you drive by. So I can see how they've grown it, definitely different from what was years ago.
Yeah, and I keep an eye on it, but basically they mow every two and a half, three weeks. You know, with the drought and that way, it's, uh-
You gotta let it grow a little bit more.
Yeah, but I asked them to make sure they mowed before the Fourth of July and they were out here. So I'm standing good, or standing tall for the Fourth of July. And even the East Cemetery, you know, they, you know, they keep it all trimmed and they mow the apron out in front by the road. Same out here, they mow the apron, so.
Good.
They're, they're really good.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Thank you, Don, for the update. Okay, I'll close public comment now, bring it back. First item on the agenda, John, is for you. And I actually have a copy for you of the term we have with the expenses and encumbrances thus far.
Yep.
And so. John is here to discuss his firefighter budget dispersment here tonight.
Okay, so, in March, the town meeting, we voted the budget through, which had an increase to start paying firefighters. Instead of doing our point system, we kinda came up with our own custom amount of money that would take to get through the rest of the year. You know, I kinda estimated five people on a call per, what was it, an hour or two? And then like a ten dollar pay rate, that's what we came up with that figure. So, you know, we need to establish a pay scale, so we can distribute this money. We started April first, keep the track, cause you told me it was in March. So that's nine months. So, most towns that do this pay twice a year. So I'm thinking August first will be four months. And we can't split it obviously equally, so if we do one payment in August, we'll do one in December. So anyways, well, you know, towns pay, there's twenty-three towns in the compact. I did a survey, asked for a survey on pay in 2017, so this is three years old. And the lowest firefighter back then was eight dollars. And then these towns pay, you know, that's base, and if you're firefighter one, two, whatever. The highest town pays nineteen sixty-nine. For EMS people, EMT basic, and they pay more for an advance, they pay more for paramedics. But just for basic, the pay range is, range is nine, fifty-nine to fourteen seventeen. Offices, captains and captains, they start at ten seventy-eight, go up to as high as twenty-six forty-three, uh, twenty-three forty-nine. Deputy chief or an assistant chief, start at seventeen, they go to twenty-six. And then the chiefs in the compact, there's seven full-time chiefs in the compact, so obviously they're not including this. So this is the sixteen other chiefs. The lowest paid chief is fourteen an hour, but he gets a five thousand dollar stipend. The highest paid chief is forty-two oh-nine, but that town has just gone full-time, so he's no longer the part-time chief. Then there's two chiefs in the compact, getting thirty-seven dollars an hour. One's guaranteed ten hours a week, they pay him just ten hours a week to keep him around. And there's one chief that gets, he's self-employed and they pay his health insurance for him. So, as you can see, it's all over the place. So, obviously, we don't have that kind of money to pay those kind of rates.
Right.
But we need to start, we need to get a base start.
Do you have recommendations for us, John?
Yep.
Okay.
So, and most towns pay for trainings, certain meetings and stuff. But I'm just proposing we're gonna pay just for emergency calls. We did points on training before, but like I said, the money's not gonna go that far. Law, some towns use the state forestry rate, which is notoriously low. We just had a couple of forest fires, so you probably saw that rate. But they're actually more than what I, what I think we can pay. You know, their warden, which would be equivalent to the chief, is sixteen seventy-three. The deputies are fourteen thirty-nine. The firefighters, which would be like an EMS person, is twelve, or a, and the firefighter would be like ten. You know, playing with some numbers, cause we've already had quite a few calls this year. We've had some long hour calls, we've had three mutually calls we've gone to. It's around the towns that are there for, you know, eight, ten hours. So, and we've had some fires in our town. So, my, what I figured for ratio is probably gonna be a little low. But anyway, just to get started, so we have a rate. I'm proposing ten dollars an hour for firefighter, eleven for an EMS person, twelve for the officer, thirteen for the deputy chief, and fourteen for myself.
Thirteen for deputy chief?
Yeah, fourteen, no sense involved, just round it off, so, you know.
And what was it, fifteen for chief?
Fourteen.
Fourteen for chief.
So, to get started, like I said, obviously we'll probably have to adjust these as time goes by. But to get some kind of a base scale, so we can start paying.
What do you consider an officer?
Pan or captain.
Okay.
Or, we only have a few of those, you know, it's not gonna be, you know, we do have quite a few EMS people, EMTs and first responders.
Based upon your proposal, can you where to have a snapshot of what we've exercised our calls? Do you have enough in the budget to carry through December?
Close.
Okay.
Depending on how many calls we have for the rest of the year.
Understood, but that's, that's a swag anyways.
Looking at the first three months.
Right.
You know, and some calls, I haven't gone back, looked at few, you know, there only been a couple of people respond for an hour. So it's only been-
It could go either way.
It could go either way. Unfortunately, like I said, we've had a couple of serious mutually calls, where, you know, we had eight, ten people there for-
And mutually calls will be paid same as anything else?
Yeah, we won't pay training, like I said. And like that forest fire we just had out on the island for two days, that came out of the forestry now that you guys just signed off on, so that won't come out of this.
Oh, okay. Now, if you have, if you have forest fires, again, those come out of your forest, they won't affect the fire, but-
Right, but that budget's gonna be gone shortly, I think we just took, only had fifteen hundred dollars and I think this last round was-
So next year, we'll have to remember to do that again.
Yeah, cause the forest fire ones always again, crap shop, you know?
Right.
If we don't mutually aid to a town, we don't, unless it's a, compact usually doesn't charge for a couple hours mutually. If you went to like, we went to Ware a couple weeks ago, and they've already called me, they said, you know, you're gonna go through the state process? I said, no, we'll just, we'll do it through our own payroll, cause it's a whole process that-
Does the state help you on any of them, John?
So we're gonna get fifty percent reimbursement from the state.
But not on these dollar ratios?
Just on the forest fire ones, so the ones we just approved, we get fifty percent of that back.
Okay, that's good, so you get that back.
Yeah, that count was still there. And you, you know, no, I mean, we had a minor grass fire, brush fire down here in the hill the other night. We're not gonna do the big work with state on that, it's so small an area.
But the regular fires, the state doesn't help you on those at all?
No. Uh, down by you.
Okay.
I think the rates look good, I'd just like to maybe come back to us in about three to four months and see how we're doing. So we can project for the next, to the end of the year.
Yeah, like in August, when we do the, you know, we'll do a round of checks in August.
Right.
And that'll give us some kind of idea of how we're looking at, I mean, that's gonna be four months, cause we did April to August.
I think that would give us another snapshot, cause I don't want you around, we're not gonna let you around.
Well, you know, we do, we do, I mean, that's why the old guys are united, this is what I'm proposing, if we run out, we run out. You know, that was just that, you know, like I said.
But it's a start, it'll let us know what to do with the budget next year too.
And that's what we said when we started.
It was a trial, it comes with a trial.
Because if my budget were to double, you know, if we went-
Well, this, this was a major change in compensation for these guys, and I think we thought it was well overdue.
And they're fine with this rate, I mean, they're not looking to get rich. But, you know, still a dedicated, put a lot of time in.
Yep, Leen had a question, but-
I'm trying to make a lot of notes here, John, did you say something like each call was gonna be maxed at so many hours?
Nope.
No, you're gonna, if it's six hours?
We're paying minimum an hour. So if a call was fifteen minutes, they're gonna get an hour.
Right, and if it's six hours?
Six hours.
Times six, okay, I just wanted-
So there's no maximum time?
Right, okay.
Just, you know, we are gonna pay an hour minimum.
Okay.
And then, feel like on an EMS call, the people that go to the hospital, they're gonna make two hours, because that takes two hours to do an ambulance run. People that, people that go to the call and then return to the station, we'll give them an hour. Because, like I said, the people that go to the hospital, between doing the run report you need to do and the time you get for the hospital back, it's two hours anyways, even the concrete now. If we go to the Elliot, you've killed two and a half hours going to the Elliot, but, uh-
I have one more question for you, John?
Yep.
If you're gonna be paying the minimum, you're gonna have this written in a policy? Where's, it's not gonna get lost if there's a change of command? Who's doing what, like the one hour minimum, the two hour minimum? And then we can establish the rate of pay for each position and their titles? You're gonna kind of put something together like that, so we can-
If you want, John, if you want, Leen can help you type it up, just give her the, you know, the formal-
Yep.
Stuff to put in there, like your officers, which ones are considered officers and whatnot, just so we know. Firefighters and just break that EMS down and all that stuff, just so that we can, you know, start cataloging it, so.
Because, you know, and there's other situations that come up with the pay, I mean, if this is a federal event, you know, they need to pay you. State, the feds usually just pick a figure if you don't have a pay rate, which we don't. Or other towns, we got a situation right now where Loudon's gonna run the race this year in August. And the company that normally provides the EMS, not gonna do it for one day, it's not feasible, cause they bring people in from all over the Northeast and, you know, they usually work a week and, you know, they stay here in hotels all night, yeah, and so now the burden's falling on the town. Provide the EMS for the outside area, the track and the, and the drivers covered by a different ambulance. But anyway, so they're reaching out to all the towns, they need help. You know, they're often, they're running ambulances for a hundred something dollars an hour. Firefighters, and they're doing two ways to do it, you know? I just put it out to my guys the other day, I'm not sure anybody will do it, but they're only looking for EMS people. And we can't send an ambulance, cause we have one. A lot of towns have two ambulances, so there's already towns signing on.
So you could send guys.
Right, but, and there's two ways they could pay. You either become an employee at the town Loudon, and they pay you just through their town, or you're done by an employee, and they reimburse the town.
You sure you don't wanna run a band for the day?
Yeah. So, man, well, I mean, it would be, if I reached ten dollars, you know?
Who's gonna wanna do that?
You know, who's gonna do that, Loudon's paying twenty something dollars an hour.
Right.
So, and they've done that in the past, they have no problem with that, just having your employee for whatever, you become a town employee over there. And I guess they've done it since the race has been around. The towns don't, can't compensate the people. So we, you know, we run into those situations, there could be an event, come to town, they wanna hire the ambulance to stand by at a, you know, some kind of event. So, at least we have a rate.
Rate?
You could say, yeah.
Sorry, wait.
You gotta pay these guys, whatever, twelve bucks an hour in the truck, so. You know, like I said, it's a starting point, get a base scale going. Because of, you know, our funds, this is-
Well, I think as a board, unless you have something else, Bob, I think as a board, we'll give you consensus to go with those pay rates and work with Leen to get a policy written up on the pay rates as a starting point.
Yep, like I said, we're not gonna stop this till August probably, so you guys can mow it over.
But you're gonna pay retroactive to-
April first.
Thank you. Wanna make sure that's placed here?
Yeah, and I think the two times a year, I'd like to get the checks out to the guys, cause they've already done some substantial.
Seems to work good, these other towns that do it.
I don't see a problem with it either, other than, just like I say, track records, so like you said, when we do our budget, we have an idea of where we have to go, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, I suppose when you commit for your budget, this will be kind of a new branch of it now that we're gonna have to work a little closer on.
Obviously, there'll be three more months and then see how this worked out, I mean, the, how close we are on runs. Cause our calls usually average about the same, two twenty-five to two forty, fifty range. So it's fairly consistent so far, but, I mean, obviously, the town is, we do more calls.
Okay, I think we're good with that, anything else you wanna let us know about, Chief, while you're up?
Well, COVID, both status quo, I mean, as far as the fire plan is going, our ambulance calls still seem to be down a little, it's a little bit of an uptick.
Did we have one more active case come into town?
Two last week.
Two last week.
Yeah, the same, was the same family, the same household.
Okay.
They're clear now though?
Yeah, they reported, they're clear now.
So, none today, the state didn't put up, they report today for some reason, so we get a daily list, so it's, it's a little uptick. But Fire Plan, we're responding the same way we've had, just one person, everybody PPE. We haven't gone through our supply of PPE, we got that first batch and it seemed to be lasting pretty good. Yeah, the rest of the wires out there now that have got start, they didn't have some start before, so it seems to be a little easier if you need to pick up. You just need to get some gloves or something.
Yeah, I see, it's eased just a little bit.
Yeah, so it's not quite as bad as it was initially. I mean, obviously, you know, other people are using up PPE, but for us, it seems to be, so far, so good.
Okay, you're still tracking expenses for Leen, so she can submit those?
Yep, it really hasn't had a heck of a lot. I mean, a lot of these towns have really got some costs, because they're paying overtime for firefighters, obviously we don't have that issue. I know some of these testing, we played on Manchester, that's run by Manchester firefighters, some of those guys are working thirty hours a week overtime, running those tests, and that all comes right out of a different money, you know? So, us, you know, Fire Plan, we've rarely done that, any cost, COVID cost, other than, you know, PPE. We got that first batch from the state, that seemed to be, we didn't get, we're still waiting for some, some stuff we had ordered.
Ours have been pretty minimal, we can't do lost revenue, so that's a big part of it down the transfer station, which we can't account for, because they don't allow us to, so ours have been fairly minimal so far, I think as a town.
Yeah, it's been, been good, figured that, you know, originally thought we'd run short and there'd be an issue getting in, and even though the states could stock and find them pretty good, but so far, unless things really pick up.
Chief, just in case you're gonna leave, it's further down on the agenda, but Old Home Day is canceled for this year.
I heard that, I mean, I hadn't given a date.
Going back and forth about it, so.
The other thing is Renee probably talked about, or Renee talked about the PPE for the, the elections coming up.
Yeah, so if you can hang on to that message.
I wasn't ignoring, so, you know, town's gonna get stuff for that, for the election and stuff, so.
Yep, they're next, sorry.
But that's all of a different.
Alright, so we're good with you?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Moving down the list, we're gonna go to the town moderator, Renee Olet, to discuss future and upcoming elections. And we also have some information here from Linda, in reference to this PPE equipment that's gonna be coming.
I've got it, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, um, you know-
Just for the record, Renee, I just wanna state your name and your reading?
Renee Olet, town moderator.
Good reading?
Okay.
The, you know, the state primary is in early September, and we still have some time, but this is gonna be an unusual election. And, and so I came again, just to kind of give you a midpoint update on how it looks like it's shaping up.
Your timing is good, Renee, cause Mike at a, at a previous meeting asked us, you know, we'd get you in to do a preliminary on it, so it's very good timing on your half.
Um, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, I could, I could probably inundate you with detail, I'll try not to do that. But the Secretary of State's office has been working with a committee to try to take a look at what, what special needs the towns and other municipalities, larger municipalities will need for the election. The municipal association, I've been involved in some of their Zoom calls with the Secretary of State. The Municipal's Association pulled together a, their own committee, and I did serve on that, select moderators and town clerks and supervisors of the checklist, but it was a smaller committee to come up with some recommendations that maybe that the Secretary of State's committee hadn't, hadn't looked at in such detail. And we sent off a letter to the Secretary of State and the governor, making some requests, asking the governor to make some emergency proclamations and for the Secretary of State to consider some things. As we know, we have this system where we use different election officials to fulfill different tasks related to the elections, as a way of kind of checks and balances. And the supervisors of the checklist are part of that, but their, their duties are really well-defined and they're kind of off to the, to themselves as they do them. However, the selectmen, the town clerk, and I, for instance, the three of you appoint the ballot clerks. Linda schedules and pays them, and I supervise them. So, you know, we have to think together as we're thinking about how we're gonna, how we're gonna pull this off in this environment. So, as I think about the selectmen's duties, you're, the big one, one of the big ones is setting up the polling space. Another is to appoint the ballot clerks, and then you have to be there for the day. You have to be a part of what goes on, you're overseeing, or, or kind of signing off on, on the outcomes. So, about that, I, setting up the space, I anticipate the space is gonna look quite different than it normally does. And I don't know yet exactly what that's gonna look like, I anticipate we're gonna use the whole gym. There will be an awfully long kind of walkway that's marked off, an entrance that will allow for a six-foot separation between voters, but still allow a number of voters to be coming in at one time. The exit's probably gonna be on the other side of the gym. The Municipal Association Committee, a couple of our recommendations were, one was that when we're trying to figure out how many voting booths we need, that the, for these two elections, the state allow us to subtract the number of absentee ballots that had been sent out ahead of time from the total number of potential voters, and then use that number to figure out how many voting booths we need, instead of just using the, the total number of potential voters. So for us, that's about twenty-one hundred. As Linda and I talk about it, we're hoping that we get a huge absentee ballot turnout. So say we get, we put out four hundred absentee- So say we get, we put out, um, four hundred absentee ballots for the state primary, where we usually don't have as big a turnout. Well, now, instead of setting up whatever the percentage is per hundred or per, you know, one booth, I think it's for the state, uh, primary, it's like one booth per hundred fifty. Instead of, uh, setting that out per hundred fifty into two, twenty-one hundred, it'd be into seventeen hundred. So we'd have to set out fewer booths.
Is it worth advertising that fact ahead of time? I mean, start doing it now so people can start requesting?
Already on the website.
Yeah. On, on the front page, I mean, make it, make it really visible.
Hot topics, first bit, unless somebody's bumped it up and right now it's first.
And we're gonna, and we're gonna have notices put in, uh, by the library, by the school.
Board.
Yeah, so.
Renee, Bob ran into something today he'd like to talk to you about.
Yeah, just, just so that we can let other people know, on the, on the absentee ballot form, you have to choose an excuse as to why and there's nothing there for the COVID nineteen.
That's true.
It's included in hot topics for the absentee ballots that you choose disability if it's related to concerns about COVID nineteen.
Okay.
That's the direction.
With the verbiage from the Secretary of State's office.
As you know, which I told my significant other that she could probably use that, but before doing that, I wanna make sure that that's the right process.
It is, it's up.
Cause I know that we're gonna redo, did they redo the, uh, request for absentee ballots?
No, they, they did not specify COVID in the reasons for requesting a ballot. Uh, it's still limited to what it's always been, but the Secretary of State and some other memo has indicated specifically that that's what you check is disability.
Is that one highlighted? Cause that's obviously what we're gonna have a lot of, is that one highlighted on our own topic?
Uh, highlighted on hot topics?
Yeah, like when they pull it up there, it's highlighted to make sure they checked the right box on that.
Um.
The instructions for the absentee ballots are actually quite long. I, I think we're gonna have a link to the Secretary of State's website where they've got its own page, uh, dealing with COVID and how it affects.
Maybe if we do that, we could, um, highlight that one section to make sure that they're, you know, checking off the right boxes, otherwise.
Well, I can't highlight ballot and, or the application itself, I can't.
No, I'm talking about the Secretary of State's notice.
Yeah, and, and also in our own notices.
In our own notices.
We can bring attention to that, cause that's the one that people are more interested in.
Yeah, or maybe make a simple list.
There's a lot, it's, it's a lot.
Yep, I've seen a bunch of them and they are long.
Yep.
So, um, setting, back to setting up the space, um, when I've got more of a sense of a map for, for that, there's one other thing that, that may change. And that is, we've asked the governor and the Secretary of State to allow us to use more of these voting screens than the voting booths. Um, to change, there's a ratio there too, but to change that ratio. The problem with the voting booths, um, is they're harder to keep clean and the curtains are, how do you keep those clean?
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so if we can use the screens, there's no curtain, at least then we, all we're worried about is.
You're talking about the screens we use when you sit down?
Um, so a lot of people just lean over, um, yes, but the, the, you know, the little trifles.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be easier to distance, uh, one from another too.
Yeah. You know, the trifles offer minimal privacy now. If those are authorized, then why can't we just take the screens off completely in the front and have one less thing to be people touching? There's, I mean, those booths will still offer more privacy.
That's a good point, that's more privacy.
The curtains. That's the guy was thinking that same thing.
Leave the curtains right off.
They're, um, as moderator, I want people to have as many options to make themselves feel comfortable about voting as we can. Uh, there may be other ways that we can, um, help, um, minimize the impact of the curtain. Um, we may end up attaching a string to them, I, you know, I don't know, we'll, we'll look at various ideas.
Interesting idea, because that little table booth, the one you sit on the table, it's minimal privacy.
Yeah.
And even if with the screens off, those, those stand-up booths will definitely still offer more privacy than anything else.
Yeah, um, it, the, uh, those screens though will be distanced, which will give more privacy. And if we're successful in inspiring people to vote absentee, we won't have very many, um, heavy, heavy voting times during the day.
Just take another box.
That's my hope. Yeah, so, um, as I get a map pulled together of how to set up, um, the, the gym, um, I'll bring that in so that we can look at it together and see what we think, you know, if I miss something, if we see a, a flow pattern that might work better, um.
The other thing that, uh, was talked about earlier when we brought the subject up is on the food, instead of open general type salads and lasagnas, maybe individual wrapped sub rolls for everybody. Maybe they could check them off in the morning or check them off in advance, whatever they wanna eat.
That's been Linda's daily work and, yeah, whatever you wanna do.
Or several different types, but that way there, that, that's their own individual sandwich, not something coming out of a large.
Whenever we do things up, especially with the Secretary of State's office for election training, they, uh, they say, they say a tasty lunch will be served. And what it is, is they have a place in Concord that brings in just a whole bunch of brown bags and they're all labeled, you know, chicken salad, ham salad, whatever, and you just take your bag.
I'd like to just make sure that when we have a follow-up meeting with your layout, that, uh, our crew is able to attend. Would you like to make sure you attend that meeting? Because he's gonna be instrumental in doing the legwork.
Okay, so I'll give you some notice, but I'm gonna come with that.
I don't think we'll need more people, just spread a little further.
Yeah, and I think you should have situational knowledge, rather than wait until the day, I think you should come to this meeting when he has it.
The, uh, the big if in that, it has to do with how many of the voting booths we have to set up. And I, I won't know that for a while. Um, those, there are four booths in a bank?
Five.
Five, so we'd be able to use the two end ones and close off the three in the middle.
Well, why wouldn't you do every other booth? Take the curtains off and do every other booth?
Uh, I don't think, I don't, I don't.
Close to your six feet.
We can look at it.
You set one, this one's.
I don't think they're six feet apart.
But it would, it will give you your spread.
Okay.
You know what I mean, if you went there, even if you put up more, they're not that hard to put up. If you don't put the front curtains on.
The other thing, right, we have to think about is those plastic things, we always clip them to each other to get some ruggedness out of them not falling over.
Yeah.
Because of our social distancing, we should think of some other way to mount them because you're gonna wanna do one U, six feet away, you're gonna want another U and, you know, so we might need several more tables.
Two ends, yes, and we may, we may need more tables, yeah.
So we should think about the tables and how to.
Yeah.
Six-year-olds.
That'll all suggest itself better once we've got a, a layout or a tentative layout for the, for the room.
Yeah.
Also wanted to talk about ballot clerks. Um, I, I've got a, I've got a big concern about ballot clerks. Um, the group that we've been using, um, are elderly. Um, and I'm, I'm concerned about that. Um, so I think we've gotta be thoughtful about who we, who you, uh, appoint.
Well, not just that, they may not wanna be a ballot clerk this one year. Um, do we have enough people to choose from? If, don't they have to be signed up in advance, ballot clerks?
Ballot clerks are appointed and their appointments expire this August and that's when the board will reappoint.
Yeah.
The Democratic Committee has already, uh, appointed three, is it, Renee?
Um, actually, they've, they've appointed three, but also suggested, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight alternatives, uh, eight alternates. Um, so they really, they really did us a favor.
And the Democratic Party.
And the Democratic.
The Democratic Party.
Anything from the Republican Party, and we need the mix.
You know, as I recall though, it's at the end of the day, if we don't get enough, we can, it doesn't, the party can s, can fade away and we're gonna.
I was wondering, we talked about this last year, about reaching out to the Republican Party for some help in this. Because we're responsible, do you want Lee to do it or would you like to do that, Linda?
Actually, maybe Renee should.
I, I looked at that and, um, I could not find, uh, any way to get, um, uh, any, um, correspondence going with the state.
Mike's certainly been in his neighborhood tonight.
The, the, the state, you're talking about the state Republican Chair?
Yes, I was. They're in his neighborhood.
They gotta be.
Go get him.
Some of my neighbors running for office.
I was just gonna say, get Jason, ask Jason if he could, you mean Jason Siderson?
Yes.
Yeah, ask him if he could make a recommendation. You know, he's gonna be on ballots a lot.
Or just give me, um, I searched the website, I couldn't, I couldn't find, I could get to the National Committee, but I couldn't get to the State Committee.
I don't, yeah, it's, it's elusive.
So if you, if you've got a way of, uh, some, some way for me to connect with them, I'd be happy to talk to them. They're out of time. They've got like a week, uh, for when they are supposed to appoint. Um, so I think, I think it'd be nice if, if they would help us, but I don't think we can count on that.
But the thing is, I did not find the, uh, the, the party as a, a stop, a showstopper. Again, I think we had them for both sides last time, but if one party's doing both at the same time, because when the other party didn't never, say, materialized with, with volunteers, we just had to do something to get it going.
Yeah, I think up till now, we've been able to have one, at each table, a ballot clerk from each party.
Okay.
We may be challenged to do that this time.
That's what I'm thinking.
For the purity of the elections, it's really best to strive to have one from each party so that we're not challenged. They do call it purity of elections. And maybe, Renee, you could reach out to JR Holt, he's very active in the Republican Party as well.
I've gotta say, I, I don't, I don't see it's my job to do their work. Um, I, I'm, I'm willing to try to reach out to, uh, the person whose job it is and talk to them, but I don't feel I should have to chase them down. That's not my job, that's their job.
Their, their, their.
John, just for the record, just state your name and address.
John Stevens. Yeah, yeah, the, 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 uh, state, uh, re, re, Republican offices in Concord, right? That, that cross, cross the, uh, street from the common, common, uh, common man. And I, I, I have been in there a couple of times for various, uh, things and whatnot, and there's, there's usually someone in there who could point you.
But I, I, I agree with, I agree with Renee though, I hate to disagree with you.
No, no, that's okay.
Renee's spot on correct, it is not the job for us to go hunting down, we're encouraging and make notifications that we're.
I'd be happy to talk to anyone who's, who's willing to call or give you information, but I don't think we're gonna chase them.
You should be, our job is selectmen to appoint Mike, and if we're only appointing from one party, it's gonna be kind of difficult.
But the thing is, it's, it's, if no one from the other party shows up, that's, that's, that's an issue.
I think if no one from the other party shows up, I feel, I believe, and I'd have to grab my election law book, I believe that falls to the board of selectmen to seek those out. I can go check it.
And failing that, I appoint.
And failing that, Renee, you appoint.
So do you wanna seek it out, Mike? You wanna take that task on or what do you wanna do?
The thing is, I don't know anyone in the Republican Party that I can even touch.
Good time to find some.
No, I don't think so. The thing is, I, I like to remain political here, but the thing is, at the same time, uh, I agree hundred percent with, with, uh, the town moderator here. It's, uh.
He's saying it's not his job, he's not saying it's not our job. But they're saying it's possibly our job, that's what I wanna make sure.
The, 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 your job is to appoint.
To appoint.
And, and to do the best you can to find people from both parties to appoint.
Right.
This is, this gets complicated though, because I'm, I, I don't appoint unless, unless I have to, uh, but I do have to supervise. And I absolutely do not want two ballot clerks sitting at that table, neither of whom have ever done an election before. So that's, that's gotta be a consideration too. We might come up with volunteers from the Republican Party, but, um, um, I know, I know for sure that the, uh, the people who we had from the Democratic Party, I think we're gonna have one. Uh, and so, um, we're gonna have an inexperienced person from the Democratic Party. Uh, all of the people that they nominated as election, uh, inspectors, none of them have done it before. Um, so, um, my hope is, if we're gonna have a Republican, at least one of them has to have done this before. Now, the good news is, we have, we have some, well, I don't know, do we have people, uh, Linda, uh, who have been ballot clerks before, who don't have any risk factor for COVID? Cause that's the other thing I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
Well, you're asking if you have some that don't have any?
The only person who is young enough not to have age as a risk factor has other health factors.
Yeah, so you may not have anybody, I mean, potentially could go to anybody's room as well, so.
Michael.
RSA six fifty-eight colon two. If any such appointments are not made by said political committees and proper notification thereof given order before July fifteenth, then the appointment shall be made by the selectmen of the town or ward in equal numbers from said two political parties. So it does fall under.
What were you gonna say, Bob?
Well, I was gonna ask Mike if he could ask his neighbor who's running for senate if he knows who the Republican Party Chair is in town. And that would probably be who you'd reach out to, start figuring out, you know, that's.
Mike, if you don't wanna do it, if you don't give me his name and number, I can follow up.
No, I'll, I'll follow, I'll follow up with him. But the thing is, uh, it's a challenge because the thing is, uh, we have age, the age.
You know JR as well? Who does the? So you could call him and he probably hop all the way to this.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're lucky, uh, because, uh, what, three years ago, Linda, the Democrats weren't nominating anybody either. So it was all us trying to make it work.
I'll take a fraction to reach out to at least two individuals and see if we're getting any movement and I'll do it in, uh, hating, win haste.
And if they want information from me about what exactly people would be getting themselves into, um, I'd be happy to talk to anybody.
Okay.
Uh, I already talked to two of the people who were nominated by the Democrats, uh, basically, I tried to scare them away. Uh, cause what I don't want is someone who comes and says, okay, I'm ready to work and then sees what's gonna happen and they go, oh, I wanna do this. We had that once, a few years ago. So, uh, but I wasn't able to scare anyone.
So we're getting you people and you're scaring people?
I'm trying, I, you know, we want someone who's gonna stay and do the work.
Counterproductive.
Uh, in a, in a warm.
If you go to Fort Smith on Saturday, you probably.
So, um, so yes, we've gotta come to some decisions about the ballot clerks. And once we've got a sense of the pool that we'll be drawing from, then Linda and I will have to talk about how to schedule them and try to make it work so that we don't have two newbies working at the same time.
At the same table.
There is, um, the state is gonna provide a lot of, uh, personal protective equipment, way more than I expected them to.
Before we go on to the next subject, Don had one thing to say, I think I missed.
Oh, I'm just thinking that, you know, we, what we might wanna do, we've got a camera here, is to cut a video and post it on the deal showing, you know, you're gonna come in to vote, this is the way it's gonna be set up and explain it to people so they can visually see it. And then you'll exit out the back door of the, uh, gym and out, you know, so that people know, first we started off with the absentee ballot and that, uh, if you want an absentee ballot and you're concerned about COVID nineteen, then check disability and go from there. If you're gonna come and physically vote, this is how it's gonna be and Renee could walk us through it and that, you know, and the table. And if you're gonna be a new register, this is where you go. This, you know, if you feel safe about this, fine, if not, get an absentee ballot, you know, just. But make a, make a short video, we can post it on the Dunbarton community page on all the websites and just get it out there.
Just remember, that's not our camera, Don, okay?
Oh, I know.
But, but I think the idea of getting the word out in as many possible ways as we can, I think that, that's a great idea.
Yeah, well, I, I posted about Old Home Day and within forty-eight hours, I had over a hundred responses and a lot of conversation, you know, going on, so, uh, it's, it's a good way to go and you're gonna reach a lot of these young mothers that are home and stuff like this, but people respond to that.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, um, in terms of protecting our election officials, uh, the state will be providing a lot of personal protective equipment. They're gonna do it through our Director of Emergency Management. Um, I, um, I've got a list, John, have you gotten a list of what they're gonna be sending?
Yeah.
Great.
Um, so you've already, I'm gonna interrupt you.
Go.
You've already, that, they already have Dunbarton's numbers? How much they're gonna give us?
Um, I'm not sure yet, they, they didn't.
There, there was some formula they had in.
Yeah.
They, uh.
That's what I read as well, when Dunbar.
They're working on, on formulas.
So if I call.
Serving up to six hundred expected in-person voters for polling places where the estimated number of in-person voters is greater than six hundred. Yeah, they've got some formula that they're, they're basing this on.
So if I contact them and say Dunbar is, and we're ready to pick up our PPE, then they'll.
I would love to have a list of what they're gonna give us.
I would too, but they didn't give us a specific list, this was just a blast that was sent out to all the cities and towns.
Cause I've got a sense, especially for November, of what we're gonna need.
Well, I gotta think if they're giving you six hundred, they're gonna be six hundred pens, it's gonna be, you know, six hundred face masks, it's gonna be that quantity of them.
Yeah, except, except at the last, at the last national election, we had closer to seventeen hundred voters.
Come in.
Seventeen hundred.
I'm thinking they go, like, they probably, they can offer them now.
They, that's how, they use the same, they use those formulas when they determine how many absentee ballots to send me. I never asked them to, for a specific number. They use a formula for each election and just with shipment for me. And they're usually spot on and we've always got extra.
They're usually good. And, and by the way that they've been talking about this in those meetings that I've been involved, uh, I anticipate that they'll do well by us, but I still would love to see the list. I anticipate that they'll do well by us, but I still would love to see the list before we sign off and say, yes.
I'll reach out to them.
In addition to what the Secretary of State's sending us, when this whole thing first started, Chris Remilar had brought us a bunch of things for the election. None of us knew we'd be getting this stuff from the Secretary of State. So he had gone to wherever he got all his PPE and brought us, I think I've got a case and a half of some wipes, some gloves, some masks, and hand sanitizer.
My understanding was that that was potentially for more general use than just the elections.
Oh, he went and asked for it specifically for the election, and this was, so we've got that put away. So we've always got that to fall back on as well.
John, do you want this list of...
I got it.
The two big things that, three big things that they're going to provide that I was happy to hear about. One was those C-3 screens, but the ones they're getting are four feet tall. So they're going to sit on a desk, on a table, and be tall enough so that a voter can walk up and their face will not be over the screen. Everyone's going to get a face shield. Everyone's going to get a KN95 mask. There'll be gloves and hand sanitizer and the like. They're even going to provide, and I don't even know if it makes sense to use this, but they're going to provide paper put on the writing surface in the voting booth, single use. And there'll be single-use pencils, and there'll be far more than 600 of those, because in November, we'll need more. Anyway.
So I'll reach out to them, see where they're at, and then obviously, I need a truck to pick it up, so, you know, town truck, probably, to go get it, because it's going to be a lot of boxes.
If you need help with that, I'd be happy to help.
Because it won't fit in my car.
I have one question, Rainy. I just wanted to be prepared for it. We had an individual come into our office here to pay property taxes, and she refused to wear a mask. Are you going to be prepared to be able to handle that individual that wants to physically be there but not want nothing to do? We offered her a mask, we offered her...
My plan now is that we're going to require people to wear masks. My understanding of why I'm wearing this mask, I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this for you. This doesn't protect me nearly as much as it protects you. And I'm, well, I'm not going to expose the election officials to the hazard that someone without a mask could be. Don't know if they are, but we have no way of knowing. A temperature scan, that doesn't really tell you. There are alternatives that we've already discussed with the Secretary of State. I will be able, if they don't want to wear a mask, I'll offer to bring a ballot out to them in their car and deliver it for them. Some of the personal protective equipment that's going to be sent are hazard suits for me to do that with. And I may put the hazard suit on just to make the point. This is dangerous stuff. We're really lucky in town. Six people? We've got six cases?
Nine cases.
Nine. Like, still, we're, you know, look at any of the towns around us.
We're lost now.
How'd you get to nine? I thought we were one to four, then we just got two.
No, the last count that they showed was nine people in town that have had it. There's no cases going forward.
I think we are wildly lucky, and I don't want to risk, I don't want to risk the health of the people who are going to be working at the election. So that's my plan now. If I get some feedback from the state that makes me think differently, I'll let people know, but...
Yeah, we have a couple months before that, so we'll see how it goes, and we'll go from there.
You wanted to, sorry, God, Mike.
I was going to ask one question I would pose to the state would be, walk us through a scenario when a voter refuses. What are my options legally? I just, I make sure we're all comfortable on the same sheet, and I would pose that early on rather than wait until the very end.
At this point, it won't matter what they tell me. I'm still going to do this.
True, but the thing is, what I would not like to do is get involved where we have lawyers, we have police, we have... I'd rather have some sound footing backing from the state as we go forward. And that's all my concern is. The thing is, I'll support you. I think your ideas are all spot on correct. Sometimes you get someone who's very libertarian, very vocal in his ideas, and I don't want to end up with police in there. I don't want to end up with a confrontation between citizens.
Well, I think we're going to probably have the police presence to start.
Oh, I know, but I don't want to have that. I have to make sure that the state is going to support us and support you.
As long as we don't refuse them the right to vote. If they can refuse to go along with what we offer them, as long as we don't refuse them the right, then we're really covered.
And as we have always done, we'll bend over backwards to make sure that they can vote.
Okay, let me bring this back. Leo had a question.
So in light of all this discussion, if you're going to promote this on the town website, on a video, if it was said that face masks will be required, if they don't want to wear a face mask, then they can send an absentee ballot.
Yes.
Now, you gave them a choice. And that's, you know?
That is, and there will be some who just want to make a point.
Right.
Yeah, that's... Okay, going back, Don, you have a question.
The one thing I was thinking, you said you would come out in a hazard suit, take it, make a lane for them to drive through voting. You know, they'll get the ballot, go one more space over, and...
Well, we're hoping we're out and have a lot of these.
But have it set aside so that people don't park there, so that it's convenient to the door and it's close to the polling area. So because, you know, they can't find a parking place.
There are problems with moving the ballot box outside of the polling place. But, yeah, we'll find a way to make it work for people.
Yeah, but designated area.
I'm hoping that, because we've discussed this and we are ready and have a plan, we won't need it. That people will cooperate and understand. We've got to work together at this to make this work well. And I got to say, my experience since I've been moderator has been that. People have been cooperating.
So we support you as selectmen. Is the choice of masks the select board's, because we did the setup, or the moderators?
I oversee the polling place. It's mine.
I would say the drive-by voting. We may recall, we had a conversation maybe a year ago or two about someone actually voting out of their car. And so we talked that concept, and that's an actual concept that we went through. The only difference is you're delivering the vote with, I mean, the ballot with a mask on and protective gear. And essentially, that concept has already been, we talked about that already before this epidemic.
John, you have a...
Yeah, just as someone who has done the ballot counting after, how is that going to be handled? Because you've got pieces of paper and whatnot that people handle, a whole bunch of people handle, you know, whatnot.
A lot of hand sanitizer.
Plenty of gloves, gloves and masks.
There'll be gloves available. There'll be hand sanitizer.
One thought occurred to me, just because I spent too much time with... If the ballot is handed in and then it's scanned, and then the people work off of the screen, scan, you know?
Scanned by what?
On a computer, you know?
Oh, no.
Picture it.
We're not going to start scanning ballots.
Okay.
You know, they have electronic ballot machines. We don't have them in this town, so everything can be done manually. And you can't start scanning ballots and losing track of all that stuff.
I think we'd have to, we'd have to get permission from the Secretary of State.
Oh, yeah, but that was, again, only a thought, because I do volunteer for the ballot.
I think PPE usage will very be critical, otherwise you could...
Now, you'll have a couple of dentiliers.
Mask, gloves.
The way that we count the ballots is going to have to be different, too, because the two ballot counters won't be able to be sitting side by side. So we'll have to look at that. I've got to say, a lot of thoughts came up as we've been discussing this that were really thoughts outside the box. And, you know, not every thought outside the box is something that you end up being able to do. But it's still really worth thinking outside the box, because every now and then, there's an idea no one else thought of, and it actually works. So I really appreciate all the suggestions. We may not be able to do them all, but it's good that we're thinking together to try to make it work well.
And that's why I mentioned what I mentioned, just as a suggestion, you know, it was all.
Okay, I want to reiterate something. This is being videotaped. We've been doing a lot of cross-conversation, which I'm kind of allowed to go on. Let's state your name and your address when you're speaking. I'll sometimes call Don or John or somebody to speak, but that doesn't mean... I just want to make sure, because it's very confusing to watch these videos if you don't know who's speaking, so... And they can't see anybody really in the crowd.
So this is Rainy again, and the last part of what I was bringing to you, selectmen, is something that you already know, but a reminder, that you're required to be there for the election. And if you can't, that we need for you to appoint your stand-in. So I'm going to be cognizant of that during the day, too. It's finding people to stand in for you, it's a different, it's different now because of COVID. And you're actually asking them to take a fair amount of risk. Even if at the state primary, we only have 150 people come through to vote in person, that's exposing yourself to 150 people. I'm not doing that every day. I don't know about you guys.
Yeah, I agree. The thing is, look around this room here. The people in this room, we're at the age risk. And so the thing is, we're all at risk here.
Okay, Don had one more thing on here. Except one thing I want to say is that the problem with the outside deal, they got to come in and register their vote. You know, in other words, sign in.
Need a ballot clerk.
To get the ballot. So that's where you're going to run into a problem out with the drive-through.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do the drive-through as a normal thing, because we'd have to set up different stations.
Right. You're going to have to have somebody from the checklist outside all the time.
The thing is, they could almost handle, Don, I don't want to throw water on you with you, but the thing is, the town moderator's already talked about this already, this happening. And the sense was, the scenario was, an elderly person who could not get out of their car, and how he would handle that as an exception. And so there's a way of getting around it. The thing is, if it's not commonplace, it's one thing. We're not saying we want to have drive-through voting. We're looking at, that would be the true exception, where the town moderator would come in and make it work. And the thing is, he's going to help anyone vote, any way he can do it. He's going to do legally and above board and seamlessly as he can. But he's already walked with a elderly person. And the thing is, we're talking about an exception here, with someone who just doesn't want to come in or refuses to wear the mask, whatever. And I think that's going to be, if I can count on one hand, that's what we're talking about.
But the other thing is, we've got those new round tables in the basement of the library that we can get to. That, for ballot counting, would be ideal. You know, they're not the long ones. They're round. And so we'll have those.
Good to know.
They're still three feet away from each other. Yeah. So, I mean, you could have two counters, and they could be facing each other, and still have the distancing.
Okay, Linda, I think raised her hand.
I did. I just wanted to just give the boards, give the board a heads up. On the absentee ballots, I've already received several dozen applications for both the September and the November elections. And I just want to make you aware that postage cost for the town is going to go up. So you'll see, and Linda needs to know, too, a lot more postage. One, because we'll be mailing the ballots to the people who request them. And two, they might even be, depending on the size of the ballot, they might wind up being 65 cents a piece to mail. So just to give you a kind of idea.
Linda, our town clerk, could you answer the...
Linda Landry, town clerk.
Not just for that, but I want to know, what's the last day that they get that absentee ballot from you?
Last day they can get an absentee ballot is 5 o'clock the day before the election. And I will be here, even though it's Labor Day, from 3 o'clock till 5 o'clock, specifically for issuing absentee ballots to anyone who applies.
So is that an item that can be set off to, set off to the fact that the COVID has increased the number of absentee ballots?
Absolutely.
So at least you recoup some of the money, so it means an expense upfront, but you also end up with a reimbursement.
Yeah, because it's not a revenue, so we can't expense that additional postage.
So this is Rainy again. Fairly recently, the Secretary of State's office let moderators know that they are working on a formula that will help them to understand how much extra money from their COVID monies they need to give to towns based on how many absentee ballots, more than usual, they expect each town to have to deal with. So there will be help for that.
Good, good to know.
And just to add another thing, because the drive-by isn't as easy as you think, Don, and I'm going to say, because of the space that we have with that parking lot, and they park on one side, they park on the other side, and you get traffic going both ways. I think they'll need to pull into a space, and again, somebody bring it out to them if that's what it takes, you know. Hopefully, we're not going to have that many.
We were really lucky that we got our election in-town meeting in just before it really hit the fan. We were already thinking about COVID. I remember being in the day before and watching everything three times. But the towns that didn't get it in, those are the ones that ended up having to think about drive-through voting. And it ends up being a very complicated issue because of the polling place and the rail. Having a way of enclosing where you get your ballot, when you turn it back in. There was a community that had a drive-through fire station, and they commandeered that for the day, and they set up that rail around the whole building.
Rainy, you've already weathered two storms.
Yeah.
Rainy, I'm just going to try to keep the mood moving.
Yeah, the three things that I wanted to bring to the three of you, I'll address them. I think our plan is, once I've got more of a sense of what the gym might look like, the community center might look like for the election, I'll bring a map, and then we'll go over it together and try to make sense of coming up with a good flow plan.
That's great. Well, thank you for coming in tonight. Linda, do you have anything further for the board before you leave?
Nothing for elections.
Nothing for elections. Okay, so that'll be further down in the... Further down the meeting, or is it something fairly short if you want?
It can be fairly short.
Okay, why don't you bring it on right now, Linda, because we're going to Old Home Day after that.
Okay, thank you. I hope to make it short. So Linda Landry, town clerk. And I wanted to let the board know that I listened to the minutes from the June 25 selectmen's meeting where the discussion of the Gopher Grant came up. And nobody talked to me or told me that it was going to be discussed, and I really wish that you had, so that I could be here to clarify and maybe answer any questions or address any concerns that you had. I'm really kind of disappointed that I have to do this after the fact, because the conversation stemmed from only one point view. And that resulted in suppositions and assumptions. So I don't know the impact that COVID and the closure of the office has had on any other department, any more than you know to the full extent the impact it's had on mine. But I want to just review a little bit of the timeline for the Gopher Grant. On May 15, Lee gave me the paperwork for the grant to sign off and to get copies of the appointment papers for the Board of Selectmen. I jumped right on it. I know that this is an important thing and revenue for the town. On June 23, Lee notified me in the afternoon that the grant had been rejected because she, there were papers missing or needed to be certified. I responded to her within the hour, that I would take care of it the next day. I got that email when I was out of the office on a day off. The next day, I did come in. That was a Wednesday. And I would love to have jumped right on what she needed, but that day, I had 28 phone calls, 38 emails, six appointments. That was in addition to the regular car registrations, dog licenses. Also on that day, the police department sent out email notifications about unlicensed dogs. The end of the day, it was a Wednesday, and I found myself apologizing to Cheryl, who was here to clean, because I was underfoot and I really wanted to get out of her way. Thursday, the 25th, was the day of her meeting. I had 23 incoming phone calls, 28 incoming emails, five appointments. You know, these emails and phone calls, they're not like work-work where I'm doing a registration. They're conversation. They're exchanges of information. They're time-consuming. This is just a little bit of how COVID has affected my department and the extra, extra steps and the overtures I have to do. I desperately wanted to get it done, but when Lee said the grant had been rejected and she needed to give more papers, I was, I just wasn't told that there was a timeline. It had to be done within two days. I wasn't really given a frame. Had that been communicated to me, I would have rearranged something. It's just really... It, it's just really hard to do that. And I didn't write the grant, so, you know, my responsibility was to just sign off and certify certain things. So I don't know what all was included. And I just would like to ask the board that in the future, if you're gonna discuss anything regarding my department or any department, please, please invite that department head or that person, so that you get a better clarification and you get both sides of the story. This COVID and the closure has been a lot of work for everybody. You see what we're going through just to set up a polling place. It, it's a lot of work and it's exhausting. I mean, my husband, Mark, can tell you, when I get home, I'm just worthless. I just wanna sleep. I'm either weight cranked up at hyper, or I'm so tired I'm dead on my feet. So please don't, don't ever assume that I'm just shirking my duties. Please, please ask.
Okay. Point won't take.
I just, I'm not, just briefly.
Yes.
Do you have one? I just wanna say that I, I, Lee, come out, town administrator. I just wanna piggyback on Linda's comments. I agree with her. The COVID-19 has been a, very stressful for the entire office. We're all trying to do our own thing in our own office and still have to work together in the same building. So when this initial application got rejected, my quickest response, knowing what she was going through with all her appointments, was to give her as much information that she needed, so that she would have the tools to say, okay, this will work, this will work. She even made recommendations, saying, "I don't want excerpts of the minutes. If you can get me a copy of the full minutes, I'll certify those." So I was working with her, and I understand she's going through a lot of stress. We are all going through a lot of stress. But without them saying, "If you don't respond within five days, you're cut off", I asked her for this information, provided her as much information as I could, to make her responsibility of certifying it easier. And we did get it in. I haven't heard a rejection yet, so my fingers are crossed. So the point is, they're giving us information to follow up with, but they're not giving us any window of time or whatever.
Yeah, when they sent the response back to you, it was very short.
Yeah. It didn't sound like we had a lot of time to respond to that. But when he did finally say, "This is still pending", I said, "Well, I'm crossing my teeth and dotting my i's". I said, "We should have two by tomorrow." So I think all is well, but it, it's been stressful for all of us.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, the board hears your concerns. Obviously, we do try and bring heads of departments in in front of us and try and keep it more rounded. And I think that, you know, your comment will go a long ways and we'll, we'll, we'll obviously consider that before discussing stuff in the future.
Mark Landry, Mont隆 Road. I came here tonight because I do listen to the minutes on YouTube today several times. And because Selectin Martel felt like he needed to vent that night on 6:25, I'm here to vent the response to that. The insinuation was that elected officials are expected to finish the job and not punch a 40-hour clock. Where I work, I don't elect the official, but that expectation is up, my boss has of me as well. I work past 40 hours sometimes. So for you to insinuate that Linda, in an open forum, doesn't do her 40 hours or does 40 hours and hits the door, let me, let me tell you how untrue that is, so that you'll have an understanding, all right? My wife leaves for work at eight in the morning. I don't see her again. This, this is COVID time. But not only COVID time, eight o'clock in the morning till six or seven o'clock at night, she's here. When she comes home, if she doesn't crash and burn, she's on the line, answering emails till 11, 12. Ask, people in town will tell you, they get emails at one in the morning from her during this COVID time. So to insinuate that she's doing 40 and hitting the door and not taking care of the business, I'm here to vent about that. And I don't think you meant it mean spiritually.
No.
But when you do it in an open forum, it sends a really negative message about my wife.
So I would respond to that, 'cause I was an elected official. And I was in my office at five in the morning. I didn't get home till late at night. It was seven days a week, 24 hours a day, that I was being paid to represent people who elected me. So my point was, when it's an elected official, it takes the time it takes to get the job that's in front of you done. That was my comment, Mark. You may take it wrong, but when you get elected and you're appointed to a position, you have to do the work that it takes to service the people you're representing.
I, I agree with you 100%, I agree with you 100%, and I respect what you're saying. But the context in which it was said during that conversation, insinuated that all Linda was doing was 40 and hitting the door. Now, if you wanna go back and look at those tonight and, and re-watch that and see your comments, that's why I'm here. I know what my wife does. I've gone through this before in this town. I've had to get up to the town meeting about this. You guys think that she does 40 hours and leaves. You don't see how many hours she puts in. And it, and that's why I'm here. Because I'm, I'm here to say that you're not seeing the whole picture. And I respect what you're saying about being an elected official. I don't know anybody that takes it more serious than she does. And the people in this town will tell you that.
Well, just so you know, again, when you're elected, it takes whatever time it takes. So it isn't on a singular person, 'cause I have to tell you that when I come into this building and I'm representing the people in this town, friendships, whether people like me and know I, when I'm in here, I represent them. Friendships stay out in the market.
Well, I respect that. And I'm not trying to beat the dead horse here, but my point is that in the gist of that conversation, when you guys were talking about not, Linda not having the information that you wanted, it was made to sound publicly that she was not fulfilling her duties or hitting 40 and hitting the door. And I'm here to say that that is not true. And I don't know that you meant that. I assume that you did not, but I just wanted to clarify for everybody.
Okay. That said, the, the only other thing, Linda, is I know that during this COVID thing, you're working a lot, like you said, online, emails, stuff like that. The board doesn't really see all of that, so, you know, don't be afraid to give us a little email once in a while or a sketch to, you know, let us know the types of hours you are putting in, because they are limited here and they have been for COVID. So the board is, you know, looking at one side of it, not seeing the other side. I know that, you know, Woody's department head has gotten great this last year, giving us updates on what's going on within his department. It helps. We almost have no questions for him anymore. And so I think, you know, a little bit of communication, even though you're elected, you're not required to do it for us. And let everybody see the amount of hours, because there are a lot of behind-the-scenes hours. And so just to kinda, you know, I think.
I certainly can do that. And actually, I had this great plan when we first closed the office. I thought, oh, this is great, the office will be closed, I'll do stuff online, I'll get a lot of projects done. So far from it. And I did start to keep a phone log. Every day, I keep a phone log. I save all my emails, I've got them catalogued, car, you know, car quotations, dog correspondence.
Yeah, we don't need a big breakdown if you do it monthly or something like that, which helps us at least.
It's an overview.
Yeah.
So that we have an understanding of what's going on, 'cause we don't see what's going on. And we have to go by what interaction there is.
Initially, I was gonna get you a real flowery, pretty one, but you just got a couple of crunch numbers tonight. But since this whole start thing started, I looked over the email today, my, just the emails. Since the office was closed and up to today, I've had over, and this is back and forth, 1,800 emails. And that's, so that's April, May, and June, little bit of July, 1,800 emails. And that's not the spam, that's not the advertising, that's not whoever from whatever country looking to give me a million dollars. These are customer-related, service-related emails. So I guess that's the best picture I can possibly give you of how it's been.
Okay. All right, well, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you for listening.
And thank you for coming to give us an update. I know Mike was looking forward to that information.
Yeah.
I said, "They always come to us plenty early, Mike. We shouldn't chase them after them." They come in early for us, so. That's me, I asked, actually asked for it. And so your timing was impeccable.
Good, good, yeah.
Because the thing is, we can't be waiting till the last minute.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna take my leave. Thank you.
Well said. I'm going to another subject. Thank you guys. Thank you, John. Don't be late.
Thank you.
All right, John Stevens, you're up.
Okay. Got a lot going on. We can just.
In reference.
In reference to old.
In reference to the old Home Day.
Right. Last, last week's meeting, we voted to, to cancel, cancel this year's, this year's event. Okay, 'cause of the COVID and everything going on. Also, also, the, the, the survey, survey Don ran was showing almost, almost, almost three quarters, quarters of the respondents saying that they weren't gonna come or whatnot. And I, I had sent out emails to vendors, exhibitors, performers and whatnot. And I was not getting, getting lots and lots of returns. So that kind of, kind of, kind of shaped, shaped it up as being an event that would have less than half the usual attendance. And even at that, with the masks and everything, could we structure it to run it safely? And based on all those, we said, it's, it'd be a good idea just to.
I think you had the right call, 'cause as a select board, we kinda had a consensus. You know, at our last meeting, that we think that the way things were developing across the country, not so much in our town and/or state, but it'd be prudent to do and, and cancel it this year. And I think that, you know, it's the right step to take, even though none of us like to see, see it missed this year. I think it's gonna be the, the prudent thing to do for the town, to keep the townspeople safe. But you gotta remember, it looks like they're gonna open schools at some level. And so that's gonna be going on just before we were gonna have this. So it's, you know, there's gonna be a lot of changes come fall that I'm not sure people are ready for, and it's gonna be a whole nother hurdle, so.
Yeah, the, the, the public, public is seeing things open up and then a problem afterwards. And that makes them say, "I don't think I wanna go to this, this kind of event or whatnot." So it was just, first off, safety, plus, plus also attendance was, was really gonna be low. Did, did we wanna spend all the money and then have half or thirty people there, you know? So, so I probably said, we voted, 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 voted to stop it. And then a couple of questions came up post that, that, that vote. We have a budget.
Yeah.
And so we, we were thinking, what, three or, three or four thoughts or whatnot. And one of them, one of them was, if we, with, with the event canceled, what effect does that have on the budget?
Goes back to the voters.
Goes back to the general fund.
And then there were some, some follow-on, follow-on thoughts.
That's me, Don. Yeah.
Right. Of, um, this event, its, its theme was gonna be getting back together. The, the town people have been all home and whatnot. And so, so we were thinking of, of ways of, of, of getting people the feeling of getting back together. Community feel, okay? And thinking about thoughts, thoughts for that, some of which, some of which may have a cost, okay? So the, can we, can we keep? I'm, I'm looking for your thoughts. Can we keep, keep, keep that account still with the money in it? Or can we take it and roll it over and add it to the next year's, somebody asked?
They don't allow us to encumber any money that's been set up in this year's budget.
Okay.
The only time like we're able to do it is Selectmen, is say we have a repair or maintenance item that we wanna do. And a vendor can't get to it by the end of the year. As long as we have that item quoted out, we can encumber that money for the following year. But since you have an event that's canceled, you shouldn't have any monies that really should be encumbered from that fund. Unless it was to do with something you, you know, either lost revenue on 'cause you prepaid something or something like that. And Don, you had an idea?
Well, last year, we had some money left over. We bought the tables.
Yeah.
What we discussed at our meeting is to buy chairs this year with some of the money, if that would be possible. 'Cause that's something the whole community would be able to use.
What's your total budget?
Sixty, six thousand and change. We wouldn't need that much.
Right.
And we only spent a thousand on the tables, 'cause we got a good deal on them.
As far as the budget this year, I'm, I'm very cautious about spending money this year at all. We don't, we rely upon state revenues, and we don't know where the state revenues are coming in towards the end of the year. Sure, we allocate this money, but talk to this department head right here. I've already advised him that he's to make repairs to keep the place operational. But those elective-type things, which would be chairs and anything else, we don't wanna just waste, not waste money, but allocate money for those non-essential items. He's got a broken machinery he's gonna get fixed, but he may hold off painting for a year because it's not needed right this stupid minute to be operational. And so without knowing, without, we're cautious about the revenues this year. And I, I can't, if it's, if it's at all optional, which goes back to the general fund, because we're at risk right now. And when we say at risk, I don't have to raise taxes or start going into reserves for operating expenses. I'm really concerned.
You may just wanna craft a new budget to include whatever you wanna do and present it to us, and then we'll look at it then. But it should go back in the general fund.
'Cause, yeah, and, and that's the kind of polling, polling your thoughts. For example, if there are events that, that, that can be a, can be, can be a community event later, later in the year or whatnot, or at some time, which, I'm, I'm gonna say this, can, we, we, we utilize, utilize this year some of that money for supporting that.
It's the old.
Kind of a.
Yeah, you're very.
I would think that you'd have to label it as an Old Home Day event. You can't label it like ice cream, free ice cream this weekend type thing. You follow my train of thought, because people set it aside for Old Home Day. So when we list your budget out, we can't really use it for like other functions. If it was part of an Old Home Day function or even a portion of an Old Home Day function, I think you could do that. But since you canceled Old Home Day, it doesn't, it doesn't look good now. One other thing I wanna say is, is just like your fund that you have for the cemetery. Part of it's for maintenance, part of it's to do, you know, different things that you've set aside, and you came to us with a budget. I'm not sure how your Old Home Day committee or budget is set up. If you guys had planned on purchasing chairs this year with a portion of your money, 'cause you weren't gonna need the whole 6,000 to do the whole Home Day setup, that still is available for you to do. What Mike is saying is, above and beyond that, we're, any revenues that are left over, we've asked all the department heads to be, you know, lean on all their maintenance items and things that they can put down a year, because we're not sure yet how the taxes are gonna come into the town and what we're gonna have for revenues. We're not sure of all the state revenues are gonna come into us at this point. The state's gonna go in the red on some of their numbers. So we're looking forward to try and be proactive on that. So what we're asking you as a board is to spend as little of that money, if you're not gonna hold, hold Old Home Day, as you can.
Yes, see, I'll go, go back, six or so, six or so years ago, the, 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 the Rec Committee backed out of doing this, you know? And, and there was a group in town, it was the Trent, Trent, Trent Transitions Group, you know, community.
Yeah, Trent Transitions Group, yeah.
And we kind of jumped, jumped in because, because this, this, like, building, building and supporting community was, was our, our mission, I guess you'd call it, right? So that's, that is where I think, I think some of the, some of the thinking was, are there other smaller events we, we could do or support? What are your feelings? What are your feelings on, on spending some money on those?
John, the problem is.
Prior to us actually voting.
COVID is still here, there's no change in COVID. We have an elderly population, there's no vaccine out yet. And to, to encourage any type of group gathering, I think sends the wrong message. And so I, I agree with Dave, COVID, I mean, has, has put Old Home Day in the rearview mirror. The money's got to come back to the town, end of subject. I think at this point, what you should be doing is having a vision for how can we have a great bang-up event for 2021?
And, uh, one of the, one of the members just, uh, just, uh, just today, like, like, at the last, 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 last week's meeting, we said, if there are any events that, that would be community oriented and whatnot, small whatever, or, or, or things to support and whatnot, take some time and think those, uh, those thoughts through. What are the things that we might want to do?
Line people, line people up for immunizations when it, when it comes out.
Well, there's, there's an idea, see?
You know, John, I don't want to put water on, on your fire, but we have chairs right now. So I don't think chairs is a necessity to go with the table other than they be new, you know? So as Mike made the point, we have no idea what the rooms and meals taxes are, whether the state's going to allow us any extra money that you can use on the road and split some to fix in the town or any of the other resources of money coming in. So trying to bring reins in on whatever money is out there that isn't being expended and the fact that Old Home Day has been canceled, at least put something back in that thing. Because I really don't want to hit our safety, our money that we set aside in case something happens in the town. And I want to be able to control the taxes so that we're not looked at like, well, like the other entity in town is looked at. You know, even when you have people that belong there and tell you.
Yeah.
They're responsible, so, you know, we do have access to, there's plenty of chairs there and, you know, if you craft your budget next year.
That's a school, right, Bob?
Right. If you craft your budget next year so you can accommodate that and your budget is well enough for us to go with, I think that's where you want to start focusing your, uh, your energy.
Yeah, see, just to make it clear, uh, uh, it, uh, it, uh, it sounds a little mistaken that, that I was, that I was kind of pushing for something, but, but mainly I'm here to, to get your thoughts, feelings on, on things. So that when, when we, we as a committee vote, we, we, we have knowledge of where you.
Oh.
Okay, there's, I, I went through the other part about the community because that's something that we feel is good, but.
So you have, you kind of have that knowledge now, right, John?
You have feedback, yes, and, uh, there, there was, was one, one said, 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 suggested made by, by one of the members and, and I just got it, I just got it today.
Okay.
Um, it is on Tuesday, August 4th at seven, do, do a one-hour, uh, 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 band concert, concert on a, uh, on a new portable, portable, portable trip trailer, trailer stage. It's, it's like fourteen by twenty, twenty feet. And, um, and then free, free, uh, ice, 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 ice cream for the audience, aluminum flavors concert. Concert end, end at about eight o'clock. Plenty of, plenty of, plenty of room for social distancing and limited interaction with, uh, audience, audience members. Cost of the event, he was saying, would be about one thousand five hundred dollars. That's, that's the band and the stage, twelve, twelve hundred. And supplies about, about three, three hundred. If it, it, uh, it rains the concert, the concert would be canceled. That, that, that then per, per, per form, form the concert a couple of days ago in a park in Concord, I know it very well, he said. And so I am just looking for your, your feedback on that. I, I'm not pushing it, that, that's a vote, that's another matter.
I think it goes to, back to what Mike said, I think that, you know, you guys have canceled Old Home Day, which I think was the right thing to do. And I think any public that size venue, um, we should try to avoid if we can. And, and like I said earlier, in the fall, there's going to be a lot more people gathering, whether it's be school or going back to different jobs, um, coming off of vacations, that there'll be enough gathering at that time so we can, you know, kind of watch the state and see if it's going to spike back up. We're still pretty early in ours, um, so I, I kind of would like to hold off if we could, John.
And that's what I wanted was, was just that.
I think that's a consensus from the board at this time. And before we get off the subject, Neil has his hand up and Don did some.
Yeah, a couple of things, the last thing you just came up with, I thought it was like, to me ridiculous because we have a bandstand here and now we're going to pull in this thing to open it up and have a band concert. Why wouldn't we use the bandstand, number one? But that's, that's beside the point. Well, maybe, you know, the, uh, as a taxpayer, this is a, uh, this is a, uh, something that the voters voted for, for Old Home Day, not for an ice cream social, not for a little get-together here or anything. So as a taxpayer, I think that's totally wrong to even bother asking. We have, as Mike said, uh, and Bob said, we, we don't know what our revenues are going to be other than lower. Lean probably remembers years when the state of Massachusetts didn't pay the town the money they owed for the tax, the lost revenue. And where, that's probably going to happen again next year. There's another revenue loss and that could happen for a few years now because they're hurting down there too, just like we are. So that's money we lose and we're going to worry about some chairs or ice cream social or something. We're having a revale in town. Nobody even knows what that's going to do to your taxes. So I feel like the money should go right back to the general fund, leave it alone, come back next year.
And just to make it clear, um, I was just wanting to get the, uh, feelings as information to help guide the vote at the next.
No, we appreciate it.
We won't shoot the messenger, I promise.
Okay.
And Don, one final.
Well, first of all, uh, we got the tables, but we're not going to have any venue that we can use the tables this year. So we don't need the chairs and if we use them for voting, they got the chairs over there. So we're good to go there. And as far as I'm concerned, put the money back in the budget, you know, we'll, you know, you guys are very generous with us for Old Home Day. So I'm not going to worry about the money. As far as ice cream goes, you got to handle it, people got to do it. I don't want to do it, I don't want to dip ice cream and be, you know, once again, have that much of a deal. So, no, I say that, let's just call it, uh, call it a day, put the money back in there. Because like you say, we, we may need that for something else.
Okay. Anybody else for comment?
Thank you for your response.
Okay, thank you, John, appreciate you bringing it in. I know that sometimes bringing in different news, uh, people come at you different ways, but I think that.
Can we shoot them out?
It's just a matter of, I would rather not wish I had asked.
Yeah.
And in fairness to, to the others on our group, you know, uh, just, just, just getting them the information.
Yeah, and you got, and you have answers to bring back to the board now, so that, that works out.
John, just imagine, we were talking about the election and how everybody's got to get suited up and covered up and everything. And you're talking about ice cream social and just imagine getting geared up to try to give somebody a school of ice cream.
And that's why I asked earlier about the people who were counting the ballots and whatnot.
Okay, we're going to wrap that up and keep on the agenda.
Yes.
So thank you guys for coming in, appreciate it.
And thank you for your, your thoughts.
No problem. Okay. That was the whole Home Day committee, I think we're good with that one.
What's this thing about police?
That's a police and then policy, oh.
Yeah. I was reading that.
I just looked at it and said, what the? Okay.
I have it here and this is something, uh, Lean brought to our attention, sent us out an email on it. It's a town policy on COVID-19 illness. We're going to have each employee sign this if possible. And what it explains is the different symptoms for COVID-19. It tells you that, um, you know, you're not going to lose your sick days by getting this. Um, it gives you a lot of good information. The only one thing that I didn't see covered in here and I wanted to bring in front of the board is, I know different companies, and mostly because they're getting reimbursed, are covering people when they're out for COVID. Has the town decided anything on that? And do we want to decide anything on that?
So can I just touch on that? So we had a joint loss meeting and that's what.
What's your name?
Lean Kamal Town Administrator.
Okay.
So for the record, we had a joint loss meeting on Wednesday and Bob was present there. And one of the, uh, individuals present mentioned that the, Mary from the library, mentioned that the library is coming up with these policies of what do you do in the event somebody does get it? We all keep saying we're doing really well in Dunbarton, we have a low number of cases, but what happens if? And by putting this in writing, it's going to answer the questions of that individual that's working for the town in the event they come down and are diagnosed with COVID-19. It can happen to a part-timer, it could happen to a full-timer. And the full-timer, it's very clear, part-timer, it's still not clear as to whether they would qualify for leave of absence, having to take fourteen days off. And that's something the board has to decide as far as how, the extent of the policy. Because the, what Chris brought to our attention sometime earlier on was that there's the additional grant that this town can follow up with that would reimburse the payroll taxes and the other things that are involved with paying an employee to be out of work for fourteen days that they would normally work forty hours or twenty hours or whatever, so.
Do you remember, was that part of the reimbursable expenses that we got?
It's the CARES, it's a CARES Act, but it's only for the payroll taxes that, um, that the town would be obligated to pay.
So I know that like, um, in different occupations, um, like my work for instance, if you're out, I think they are paying us. Um, and they, but they can get reimbursed for the, most of that money because they have different sources of income that they just applied for. As a town, I'd like to know your guys' thoughts on it. And also, this we would like to make as a, um.
I'd like to, you know, we should probably each get a copy and make a decision on that without.
Right, and, and what I want to do is if we do act on this, Bob, I'd like to put it instead of waiting until June because this is pertinent now, I want to get the information out just so our employees all know, okay, if I'm feeling this way, I should go into work. And I want it to be clear and in writing to them, and my work actually just did a similar one. Um, because we were going through the proper steps at my employment, but it hadn't been put in writing. So last week they put it in writing and I think it's, it's very clear for the employees and.
You're following the CDC rules, which if, it, number one is if you show some symptoms, they make you go home for three days to start out with. In the healthcare industry, hospitals, doctors' offices and long-term care facilities, they actually end up going on workers' comp because they're working with COVID patients. In an office or in the transfer station, somebody could have it, but you'd have an argument with Primex as to whether or not they're covered because they can say they got it at the grocery store. So it becomes more muddled, you know? So I, I, I agree, we should have some kind of a policy.
Yeah.
So that, you know, they know.
So why don't we, why don't we put this in the file? Um, Lean, I think emailed me part of this already today.
All of you did.
All of us.
We all got it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I haven't checked my email today, so.
But we did add a couple of pages in the afternoon that she can send over to you, so.
You sent an updated copy out?
Yep.
This just came this afternoon, so we'll table that and then we'll discuss it because you're right, the wording in there is very simple, but different of all these, so.
You know, I've, I've seen some of what, they have a one-page one that they put out to you.
Right.
That's real quick.
That's the one I opted with, the first one was seven pages, it was just.
Yeah, so I would like to really look at it and then we could make a decision on that fairly quickly.
And, and on top of that, what I'd like, I will do is follow up with Primex and, and ask him specifically to give me something in writing as to how they would help the town and our employees, whether they be part-time, full-time under this COVID.
Okay, and then you send that out to us so we can make a better decision.
Lean, that is somewhat muddled though, only because you can't really point to somebody unless you got a call from Health and Human Services.
Yeah.
That said, somebody came into contact with you. And it ends up being that you're also working with Joe Marie or Linda or somebody else and they notice that they all have, had to get tested because someone came in contact. Then you'd know someone came in the office. But without that, what happens in some industries is they could say you got it when you went in the hardware store or when you went shopping for groceries or.
I might as well be the one for, for even part-timers for, for working on.
Right, give you an example, like we had one of my facilities in Jaffrey, which I don't go to very often. One of the drivers came down with COVID-19, the entire facility was shut down for a period of two or three days and a thorough clean company came in and went through the entire thing. We were not required to test each employee in that facility. They all had those three days or whatever it took to clean off. And then those employees came back to work, um, but they were all required to probably do the fever tests and all that stuff. But it was, they did not have to all go get for full test, which I was surprised at. But the state has different guidelines on what size your company is and what requirements you have. And so they followed those and, um, that facility back up and running. So the people that came into closer contact with that person obviously had to do self-quarantine and stuff.
To give an example, Chief Thaddeus Colby, they came in afterwards, cleaned the entire office, got people tested. I'm looking at Woody's operation there, he's got a small office, one restroom in the office that they, all the employees have to use. If one person came in on positive, I, I'd be willing to authorize a complete disinfection of his office or a testing of all the employees. I think that's the only prudent thing to do and we got to make sure that addresses stuff like that.
Right, so, and you know, some of that stuff, like as the cases come up, as a board, we'll have to decide those.
Case by case.
Yeah. So for now, this is just a policy that really lets the employees know what to look for. If they're feeling those symptoms, don't come into work.
What about us?
You guys still come in.
You don't work anyways.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll take that up, um, Lean, our next thing and we'll get a little in for a little more information in the meantime. Okay, I have a town hall renovation update for you guys. It looks like, um, Jeff did his last structural, um, meeting, um, on seven nine. And the drywall patches will be completed tomorrow on seven ten. I made the meeting today, um, with Jeff to finish his last inspection on all of the metal gussets and plates. And the ones that were put on prior were already all patched. They used that exterior fire escape and I got to tell you, it's, seems a lot ruggerer than one would have thought looking at that building earlier, but they've used that through the entire construction. They carried the steel down it and, uh, I've gone up it with several people now, it seems very secure and.
All at the same time?
Yeah, and Jeff, and Trent Siller, the engineer, actually stated that it felt very secure into the timbers. So that building will be complete after tomorrow. Uh, we did do just a broom finish because it was very messy up there to begin with. So at some point, as part of our maintenance function, we might want to have that second floor cleaned just so it's a little bit more presentable.
I think, I think we're going to have to get the, uh, the AED in here, I think it's almost done.
Yes, so, um, so knock on wood, that, that went very well. We had a couple of, um, rotten beams.
Yeah.
They had to have larger brackets on, uh, we had some additional tin in the back area that was in the way. They were able to take that down, bend it down, and, uh, it's all going back in place very well. They saved the extra pieces for us. But I was up there today, it looked phenomenal, and the company we use, CCI, I can't say enough. But I was up there today, it looked phenomenal. And the company we use, CCI, I can't say enough. Their insurances came through on time, their contracts came through, their modifications came through. Their job meetings were great. They worked with Jeff Trexler very good. And they just upheld everything.
They went over and above in making sure with the required testing, which was minimal to the whole project in excess of their bid, was well worth the money to go through the testing.
So now we have testing on every paint, the tin up there, the poly that's on the fur paneling on the bottom, the fur wainscot, the doors. So that entire building's tested, so depending on which areas we ever work on maintenance-wise, we have that all on, on record now and we can take care of that. The company itself did a, did a great job and they did it in a timely manner. They're actually finishing ahead of schedule. And so I can't say enough about-
So that being said, Jeff Trexler has been following, I mean, he's been there two, three, four times a week.
Yeah.
Where he has been overseeing this whole project. I expect an invoice to be coming forward here shortly. So as long as Jeff is respected.
Jeff told me that that final invoice should go to him direct.
Okay.
And he's gonna sign off on it.
Perfect, that's what I wanted.
He did give them the okay to do that little bit of additional testing and work, which we had already talked about. And, but no, I just, I can't say enough about, from going from one company that treated us terrible to a company that is just treating us top-notch.
It's like nine-day, it's completely-
You know, if we ever do the, the addition on the side of that building, I, I just hope this company bids on it. They were very, very good.
Thank you, Lee.
So that update is there. Let's see if there's anything else on here. You needed me to sign this, didn't you, Lean?
Yeah.
There's some additional cost of $550 and 15% on that for their overhead and profit. That was the COVID-19, we just wanted to-
No, that was the continuation.
Yeah, I have that here.
Okay, good. Questioning order.
Uh, what's today's date? 7/9, Lean?
7/9.
Okay, that's all signed. I'll hear Lean. Town hall construction. This is just, I think she already sent you this email, but this is just an update of Jeff Trexler's inspection. We're gonna see two inspection reports coming out on that as well. Those are just Jeff's final inspection reports saying that it's complete, but.
Do you want to make a comment about, for the record, about one of the suppliers? Just for the record, how you were in a boat, it was difficult, just for the record, on that building?
I guess it was brought to my attention through Mike that Validate supplied some material up there. It was not through me direct. I think they dealt with one of my other salespeople in my office, so I have no knowledge of it or what they bought from them. There is some extra 2x6s up on the second floor they're gonna leave and one bracket that we didn't use because they had to manufacture a larger bracket. One other note, that reminded me of, there's a dumpster outside here. Lean, next week, we can call Breyer in the middle of the week, or Brett, and let him know when we want that to picked up. And he said, you know, they're very busy now, so they might pick it up two or three days after. He has said if we have anything that we want to put in that dumpster, as a town, we can. As long as it doesn't do, you know, the open oils and this stuff, but if there's any-
The van stand's scheduled for next week.
Anything you guys want to put in that dumpster as a town?
You want to wait on the van, the van stand?
Yeah, put the weight up, put the columns and stuff.
I was gonna ask when they're gonna do that.
Next week.
Oh, cool. That's what I told the girls today.
So anyway, so they, so Lean, if you want to let any other department heads know about that, they, that dumpster's not even quarter full. And we have a full dumpster here as part of that project, so.
Town hall, any demolition material?
Dave? You said there were two 2x6s left up there.
A few 2x6s.
The cemetery trustees could use one in the Hearst House.
Up on the second floor? They'll be working there tomorrow, Leo?
How long are they, you know?
They're, they're fairly long. You might want to bring a portable saw, you need smaller ones.
Yeah, well, I, whatever the width of that building is.
I think they're close to 20 footers up there.
Ooh, yeah, I don't intend anything that long.
But Doug, cut one in half. If you need one.
Yeah, for the Hearst House, yeah.
Yeah.
Might as well, if yours are gonna be left there.
Yeah, walk and grab one.
Okay, that sounds cool, thanks.
Okay. Town hall renovations update was done. We had, in our non-public meeting, we had started some COVID-19 discussion about additional cleaning in this building for our cleaning person. We actually had a letter provided from our cleaning lady giving us a full description of the additional work and cleaning that she's trying to do in this building to stay on top of her tasks. And not only has she done that, we've seen it, she comes in additional times to clean and she's cleaning way more surfaces than was required on her regular job. And she was looking for some sort of compensation during this COVID-19 pandemic. And as a board, we discussed it with a couple different options. We didn't want to increase hourly pay, but we were willing to do five, five additional hours per week on her schedule, Lean, to cover her for the additional cleaning on that. And so I would like to make a motion that during COVID-19 pandemic, until the, until the state releases and, you know, we follow through with that as a town, to pay her for those five additional hours per week for the additional cleaning. We have Plexiglas in front of all the stations, the counters are wiped, these surfaces, the seats, everything sprayed, cleaned. She's doing a real thorough job.
Hey, for the record, you're not paying her just to do, paying her for hours, you're expecting her to be extra here, five extra hours a week?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to make sure that's known. She's expected to be here five extra hours per week to do the cleaning.
Well, she's putting extra time in now too, so.
Well, I, yeah, it was, it was kind of not quite as clear in the letter on that.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. The hours are available for her to go over her budget, basically.
Yes.
Because her budget is based on 52 weeks, nine hours a week. So you're saying she can go over her hours
Yeah.
to do what she needs to do, get the extra hours.
Yes. But if you remember in this letter, Mike, she was also stating, you know, her cleaning duties before vacuuming, dusting, some, some surface cleaning. Because of the COVID-19, even during her regular hours, there's a lot more cleaning that she's doing. So I wouldn't say that we're requiring her to be here all five additional hours.
Oh, whatever it takes to get the job.
That's right. So those five hours, I want to make sure that she's, they're added to her. Like say she worked three extra hours.
Yeah.
I still want her to get paid for the five additional hours because she's doing more cleaning during her regular job than she normally would be.
So one thing I'm noticing is that she's looking at our schedule of meetings and she's actually coming in an hour or two-
Before them.
In the morning at five, after you've held a meeting, she'll be here in the morning to wipe surfaces down, knowing that, like we had a, a revell meeting today. And she asked me if they would be wiping down the surfaces and then we have our meeting here tonight. She'll be here in the morning before we come in at 8:00 to make sure that all the surfaces are being wiped down.
I would just say document her hours appropriately so she can have up to five extra hours, is what Dave was saying, to get the job done.
Yeah.
There's no reason for her not to get, she'd be lifted nine hours a week.
Use up the hours, in other words, don't, you know, use them up to do the job however she needs to do it, so she's not-
Yeah.
Don't want her to use up her own time doing the cleaning that we're asking her to do.
Right, bingo. I agree with you.
Okay, so that motion has been made?
Consensus.
Consensus to give her extra hours.
Okay, consensus. Sure, that's fine. Okay. So that portion is done. And now, I'm gonna leave that letter in here so you can put it in your file.
One more, continuation non-public regarding employee promotions?
Yeah.
You could just state something in the record that the-
I can, but you didn't give me any form for that, or did you?
You look at your meeting minutes if you want.
Yeah, I may look back at the meeting minutes file that you signed. I'll do it off that, so it's a little bit more familiar. What we're doing here is, we had a non-public meeting and we came back out of that. And this would be the next public meeting we had to discuss what we talked about. But we had a special meeting to speak about hiring a transfer station part-time manager. And we decided to move Ed Wooton up to that position, starting at step level number one. And that part-time transfer station manager has been doing a serious amount of training already in that position that he held now. And it was a great move for him to move up laterally. And we also moved Ryan Tracy up to transfer station attendant level two earlier than expected because he has additional responsibilities he's gonna bring on that Woody is gonna train him on to help out with some additional duties we're gonna require of him. And both people were told to watch their language during their execution of their duties. And both people were put on a six-month probation period for their new, for their new positions, so we wanted to announce that at this. So I guess I'll make a motion for those two positions at those pay rates that are stated.
Okay, and there was an administrative adjustment we had to make on the start date. Please explain that.
It was effective that date.
Effective that date?
Yeah.
Which was, um-
June 30th?
June 30th.
Yeah.
Which is the first day of that work week for county purposes to be able to give them the same rate of pay during one period.
Yeah. So that motion was made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob seconded. So I made the motion, Bob seconded the motion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye, aye, aye.
Can I also mention that Woody did approach the board about filling this position in order to get the additional coverage he needs during his absence? And the typical process for us is to vote within. And if there's no applicants interested in that position, then we advertise outside of our current employee staff. And he did have two individuals apply for that position, so that's the reason why it came before you guys. And the board made a decision to support Woody and his department.
Just for the record, I, I saw those two individuals this week. There was like a spring in their step, in my opinion. I think they were working well.
Okay, great. Now I'm gonna move on to mailbox items. Okay. The treasurer's asked that we come in a little bit early next week to sign payroll. We're gonna have it done on Tuesday, July 14th. Because there'll be some vacation time next week, so I've signed this and just want to make you guys aware of it. We'll try and get in Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon to sign. That would be great.
If the payroll's ready.
Two will be done.
Alright. Alright, this is a motion, not a motion, but a notice from the Secretary of Interior. Payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $33.73. I'll label and sign this as well. And just a notice from Lean to us.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah. Our budget that we had put in there already was $33.02.
Okay.
This is, this is associated with the flood control. It's a little bit, it's the-
US Forest Service and US Army Corps of Engineers. Over by Bob's. Okay, Bob might want to talk to this one. We have a, there was a conservation committee meeting last night and they held a public hearing on Eversource tree trimming on the scenic roads in Dunbarton. They brought the meeting in this building instead of outside. Everybody wore face masks. They wanted to thank Lean Como for the chairs that were folded up, so they had the social distancing. And Bob, why don't you give us an update on that since you were there?
Well, pretty much it's the work that's being done for Eversource. The arborist was in to talk about flagging the scenic roads. And he went back and checked on the flagging, removed some and put some additional up. And they're actually have Aspen do the cutting. A lot of it's some of the ash trees, but some of the damaged trees and trees that may be in the way that need to be removed. And they're doing it by this, the arborist, by his standards that they have. Additionally, they're gonna have Aspen chip the trees. And they talked about either bringing the chips to a transfer station or just blowing them off out in the woods so that they're not compacted, but they're spread out. So that's, that was the first part of their meet, the public section of their meeting. And then we got into some other issues. And one of them is with Kimball's pond. And they had some questionable people camping out on one side of the pond. And they got the police there to get them to take their camp down. And as Brett explained, one of them was a prisoner that was on parole who was, I guess, got a letter from New Hampshire Legal or whatever. But they found that there were some things there that they probably didn't want to find. You know, they, there was a bunch of stuff left behind and they were cleaning that up. Right now that's taken care of, but they've had other activities there. So you may see the Conservation Commission coming to us with a warrant article this year again about locking the barways, because the police can only go in so far with their cruiser. And then they have to hike in the rest of the way. So they'd like to see that barred off, you know, so that people can't be driving in and out because there's a little more of this going on than is going on in the past. And that's, that's the Conservation Commission's.
Okay. Thanks for that update, Bob. Mike, you signed the paperwork. We just signed the updated paperwork for the your employees and pay raises at the transfer station. We have a ZBA agenda that Lean has given us. There's gonna be a ZBA meeting that's coming Monday on a Gary Road property. And that's an actual waiver coming in front of the board. And then there's a request for a variance for non-conforming lot line. And that's on Monday. If anybody liked to attend, that starts at 7:00 PM to give input.
What was the name of that road?
Huh?
What was the name of that road?
Gary Road and the other one is-
Oh, Gary Road, yeah. Sorry.
You know, they didn't give the other road address. They just gave the map and lot for John Wilt. Gary Road is that at the corner.
Yeah, yeah, I get it now, yeah.
Okay, those are the mailbox items. I'm gonna come back to the meeting here to see if there are any public comment.
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay, bringing it back to the board. Mike, do you have anything for the board? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I have Patrick Brown, transfer station manager, have a few updates for you.
Oh, okay.
One being, there was a small accident last weekend at the transfer. Police department came down, did a report, somebody hit the building. They were over height. They were over height in their vehicle. They had something sticking up and it hit the plastic wood. Probably $100, $150 damage. There is a police report that I'll get from the officer who took it. And then we can move forward on it. It basically broke a piece of plastic wood. There was some other damage underneath, but
Okay.
more the plastic wood is the issue.
Okay.
Because we just had that done not too long ago. Another thing that's coming along is, I had a meeting Tuesday night with Town of Bo. We're looking at moving forward with Health and Safety Way Stay. A little different setup, a little, it's in the beginning stages, but we will be looking for some volunteers. Probably between four and six, depending how things go over there. We're still in the early stages. We just voted on a new vendor. Considerable less money than last year, at least appears to be. So that's in the works. Let's see what else I want to tell you. I had a list, but sitting here, I think forget about it. Oh, so to give you a heads up for next year. I'm in the early stages. I'm not saying I'm coming to ask for one. I'm in the early development stages of an additional building. Not what you think for a building, though. Very low-key, low-cost, no thrills, more of a storage. Just to give you a quick heads up, maybe be a storage area for our equipment and actually be able to put the Mac in undercover. It's nothing spectacular, like spoke of the building inspector a little bit today about it.
Is it non-heated?
Non-heated, very little electricity, basically a couple lights and a block heater. I ran my idea by him. He seemed to be pretty, you know, he didn't think it was a bad idea. At some point I want to talk with Dave a little bit- At some point, I wanna talk with Dave a little bit, just for, to get your building aspect, because you know that stuff and to see what you think. Um, and then potentially get a price and, you know, go from there. If it's, you know, there's, there's ways we can do things. There's grant money I can get to go towards it and, but I just, I don't want you to be snowballed and say, ooh, the last minute.
So you're going with canvas and tent poles?
Yeah, pretty much. It's, it's pretty close to that. These are heads. I know there's stuff going to talk to you, not forget.
Have you enjoyed a couple days off?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I'll take them off tomorrow and I don't come back till next Tuesday.
Great.
Ah, that's the other thing. So, the next Tuesday, are we, I know we talked two weeks ago and we still wanted to see how things are going. Are we starting to charge next Tuesday, taking the combs down and?
I think, I think let's follow through with your process. I think uh, I think, you know, you've made some rational decisions down there and it seemed to be going smooth enough and I think we should try it. And like you said, if we have, as a board, um, see something spreading and we've gotta come back and pull back, then we'll do that. But for right now, like you said, this will get rid of a lot of the stuff that's lumped up in people's yards. And so let's go ahead and do that and let's charge for some, get some revenue back for the town and um. I, I think, did we, did we do the electronic checks um for the we did do electronic checks for the town um tax collector, didn't we?
We did, but um, I don't know if we could do that for the transfer.
Can you maybe look into that, Lean, and just double check, because it's, could be a chance, you know, we could have you get that.
Well, isn't some, but the problem is the, the price is determined on the spot right then and there. They have to.
Right. The, the easiest thing to do, you could do it two ways. I know a lot of people have fear of touching stuff. But we handle cash in our daily lives. So if you had gloves on, we can do one of two ways. We can handle cash with the proper P P E. Or checks only. It's, but you're still handling.
Either way, either way, you're, you're gonna want it.
P P E, either way.
Right, so I'm thinking, let's do what we're doing, take the checks, take the cash.
Okay.
With a proper P P E. Um, I kinda wanna designate one or two people to do it.
Sure.
So, so we can have a rotate, but you know who's doing it. You know, and it is what it is, you know. If something happens, then like you said, we'll, we'll get this first wave of stuff out of the way.
Yeah.
And we'll shut down. You know, if that's what happens.
You know, I like, what he's using is common sense. I think that's very appropriate.
I, I just have one question on that, where we're doing social distancing and they're not assisting the public. If someone brings in an old desk that they managed to get help in their vehicle, are they gonna be responsible for getting rid of that or refrigerator or?
They have machinery that they can, you know, once people get out of their vehicle, they have machinery so they can take care of the stuff.
Pretty much what we have been telling people, I, if you have a refrigerator, not so much a refrigerator now, but stove, a washer, dryer, anything heavy, if you can push it off your vehicle.
Right.
Drop it on the ground, we'll move it from there. I don't want the guys in the habit of offloading with a machine. If we hit your vehicle, we're liable for it. But if you get it on the ground, you know, obviously you got it up there. If you can just flop it off. And most people, they kind, if it's heavy, they come with two people anyways.
Right, I would continue to.
If you flop it on the ground, we'll scoop it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I would continue to enforce the policy that we're not unloading your vehicle.
Right. The only time.
Bring extra help.
Bring extra help, exactly.
The only time we've had to do it and it's usually either been myself or Eddie. We've had some giant hot tubs come in and I don't know how, they got it on there with a tractor, so you can't lift those up. And we've cautiously taken it off, but you know, you, that might happen. It's only, I think the last time was a couple years ago, so it doesn't happen very often. Um, another quick thing, the gates. Uh, I contacted Justin again, we had an issue. They came out once. One of them still wasn't right. Um.
The front gate?
The gates um in front of the uh dumpsters.
Okay.
One of those wasn't right. He came out, uh, I contacted him Monday. He came out Tuesday while I was away on vacation and Eddie said everything's fine. They painted everything, so everything's done. I haven't tried the gates. I just did my trucking today and left, so um, when I come back on Tuesday, I'll try. I'm sure it's fine. Eddie said it was fine, so I'll take his word that it's fine. So everything's good there. It's something, you know, uh.
Oh, good.
So.
But tell Eddie his job is dependent upon it.
Yeah. No, he, and the crew's been, you know, they've been, they've had some slack moments, but they've also been really busy, so. I'll get a notice out um in the next day or so on the Facebook and let people know, because we seem to get a good response from that.
Yeah.
You know, in every job, Woody, there's gonna be five minutes here.
Oh, no, no, no.
That people talk and stuff. I don't, I don't look at that upon anybody negative, you know.
No. No, I don't either.
You're gonna get that at any job. If you don't give somebody somewhat breaks, they're gonna be down the road.
No, no, no. Bob's saying there was no, like, hour standing around that time. It was uh, you have five, ten minute breather, then you're right back at it again. So it, things have been progressing well, so.
Okay. All set now?
Yeah, I think.
You know, I put on the closed glasses when I was looking out at you, so. Coming back to Mike?
I'm gonna, I'm all set.
You're all set, Lean? And Bob?
I've got a few things.
Oh, okay.
Uh, at the joint loss, they went over some of the stuff that was done and wasn't done as far as projects. You had uh lighting for the employee area that you had a quote for. And you came to us in December and uh, we haven't done anything about that yet.
When you say employer, you mean where they work?
Where they're parking, right?
Yeah, the parking there. We were looking to try and illuminate that.
From the building?
From the building out.
Yeah, you got a price on it?
We did, uh, like a year and a, yeah, it was been a while. It'd be worth recall.
Yeah, could you get us a few quotes and someone to jump on that? That's one of the things.
So when you come back, call me. I have another electrician you get a number from.
Okay.
And then uh, the box trailer, the ventilation. There's been no progress on that and I don't know if we might be able to get somebody to take a look at that, you know?
We um, we got quotes from Greg.
Yeah.
And then that was for this up and coming in March and then boom, now COVID's here, so everything kinda.
Yeah.
But I believe there is still a quote from him. Um.
How, do you remember how much it was of, of price?
I actually don't because I think he gave you two different scenarios.
Okay, we need to review that.
I think he did two.
Could, could you get that from him again?
I think we, I think it's, I think we might have it.
What was it?
If not, okay.
So why don't you get both of those going and then come see us and we'll try and square away the funds for that to get those things rolling.
And I got one other thing. I was gonna call a point of order when this came up, but I said I'd let it go and I'd bring it up under my thing. When we have public comment, we have a department head that comes in and gives us a spiel, who should actually be on the agenda. You know, tonight you had the people who were here for elections and what that department had some other concerns that they wanted to bring up. And that's the right way to do it.
Right.
And so public comment is for the public to weigh in on whatever we're doing. And if it's a department head that has something to say and bring up, that should be on the agenda. So rather than embarrassing anybody and say point of order, I just wanted to make note tonight that when they did come in, they should bring it up under
Yeah, that's a good thing.
the regular business.
Makes sense. Yeah, that, that makes good sense.
For the record, it was not only now, but it happened early in the meeting too.
What?
The, the point of order could have happened two things. I'll be honest, it was transfer station. Okay, that's one, so be it. And it was also the cemetery.
I, I don't have, this is at the end of the meeting and so I came under public comment and this isn't that individual. That you spent a lengthy amount of time going through something that if you had it on the agenda, you would understand that you're going through that amount of time.
Right, right.
They're a department head. So I don't have a problem with him trying to bring something up at the end and he might have wanted to bring it up before public comment, because that's what you've done before.
He's on vacation.
It don't matter.
So, you know, I, but my, my point is that when you're starting a meeting, public should be involved and department heads should be included in the agenda.
Yeah. Point taken. All right, anything else for tonight's meeting? Being nine twenty or nine nineteen, I'm gonna call to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Bob's seconded it.